October. Indivisible with liberties and justice for all. Like to welcome everyone. This time, Genevieve, take the roll.
Councilmember Thorson.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Mayor Furlong.
Here. Quorum is present. This time, we do have, we don't have any presentations. Do have the consent agenda, and I'll turn it over to City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. On the consent agenda tonight is A, September 20th, 2022 workshop minutes, B, September 20th, 22 regular meeting minutes, Item C, September 20th, 2022 H A R meeting minutes, Item D, general claims of $935,729, Item E, H R A claims of $3,819.08, Item F is E D A claims of $517.25, Item G, world architects and engineers community center presentation discussion, and Item H, Anchor Block Commons final B M Ps, City Project 22-05, approved change order number one.
This time, if a council member would like to pull an item, they can do so at this time. Councilmember Thorson.
Yeah, Item G.
Okay. We'll move Item G down to Item D on the city business action items. So, a motion to adopt the consent agenda without Item G.
So moved, Your Honor.
By Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Excuse me, Mayor. We forgot to adopt the agenda.
Oh, we did. Oh. Motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Cole.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is adopted. Thank you for catching that. This time, meeting open to the public. I have two here. John Peterson. Come up, John. We'd like to keep your comments to three minutes, and just come on up to the front here. It's like the old days.
I don't know.
But if you can keep it up to three minutes, and then we don't take in.
Want to pass them down?
Sure.
Like you're taking tests. This has to do with down on Sepulah Boulevard, down by the library. We've got a bottleneck on the road. We've had it there for years. I live down there that way now, and you can't pass another car from the other direction like on a normal road. You have to kind of sit there and wait till they go by, and then you go by. And the sketch I've put out here, anybody can take copies of those, shows that there's a curb, there's a concrete curb on the south side of Sepulah that sticks up like a finger, and it kind of does interference with a curb on the other side of the road or by the library, and that's where the cars cannot pass independently. They have to wait their turn. And I'm saying if we could remove the curb there, the concrete curb, and look 120 miles, 120 feet to the east, stick a movable Jersey barrier there, or a little bit closer, depending on where you'd want to, and that would give cars, they wouldn't have that curb on the south anymore. They'd be able to clear that, and within a certain distance, they'd be able to clear the Jersey barrier, wherever it would be. But it's movable. That's what Jersey barriers are. You know what Jersey barriers are there on the highway? And that's my concern. I mentioned it to former mayor Mike Keen in the past. I mentioned that to current mayor Terry Furlong last year. And something has to be done, because you just don't know who's going to hit you when you're down there, when you're carefully going through, and they want to sneak through. Somebody's going to get hit. So I don't know what else I can say.
Yep. So John, I did bring it to Public Works, you know, and they've looked at it, and I think the recommendation was to leave it the way it is now. It'll be something, so it'll be something we'll have to take up with them again.
Right, because it's a hazard. This is not your normal street.
Sure. No, it's not. We know it's not the normal street.
We started sticking barriers like that out on Margaret Street and having people wait for their turn to go through one at a time. No, that's what we're dealing with down there.
Right, right.
So.
I appreciate it, but we'll bring it back to them again and see what they say.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
All right.
Am I covered?
You're covered.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it. John Schmal. And you did it under three minutes, so that's good.
When do you start the shot clock?
You start it now.
It's going.
It's going.
Okay. John Schmal, 2750 Chisholm Avenue, North St. Paul. I had other subjects, but I walked out of my house this afternoon or this morning, and they were flushing the hydrants. They were flushing the hydrants, and the, it hasn't happened. The last time it got up here, I just looked at the Internet and said it was the time of Banda Aceh, was 2004, December 26th, and I used that as an example when the hydrant was opened up and all the leaves on the road, they went down the road to the sewer like a tidal wave and into the sewer and into that wonderful, spring-fed, clear lake called Casey Lake. We're not supposed to be adding vegetable material to the lake. And again, today, the streets were not swept prior to the flushing of the street, and down the street goes the leaves into the storm sewer and out into the lake. I don't think we should be doing this. It's not something that is recommended, shall we say, to wash vegetable material leaves into the lake. It doesn't help the lake survive, shall we say, and not end up as just a mud pool with a little water over the top. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anybody on Zoom? This time, we do have a public hearing, and I'll turn it over to City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we're working on Chapter 32 amendment, just kind of a cleanup. Would you like to come up and discuss that, please, Brandy?
Welcome, Brandy.
It was working earlier, so. Oh, perfect. Is it working in front of you, too?
No. Yep, yep, now it is.
Okay, great. So tonight before you, we have some amendments to Chapter 32. These were brought forward by the Planning Commission earlier this year to address some cleanup issues that have occurred basically the last time this chapter was amended. So this draft ordinance includes the generalized updates, clarifying the powers and duties of the Planning Commission, clarifying the powers and duties of the Planning Commission so that they are also the Board of Appeals and Adjustment, and clarifying the duties of the Park and Recreation Commission, and then also removing typographical errors. So modifications to the Planning Commission duties basically indicate specifically that their role is to act as the Board of Appeals and Adjustment, and also in lieu of a design review committee, the Planning Commission is assigned to the task of site plan review. And then the ordinance also clarifies the Planning Commission's role as it relates to the capital improvement plan. It's their task to make recommendations to the city council on the capital improvement plan as it relates to the comprehensive plan. And then in addition to that, the city council has the option to dispense of the Planning Commission review if there is no C I P items that relate to the comp plan at all. Modifications to the Park and Recreation Commission duties, it's just clarifying that they are a recommending body to city council, and they make recommendations based on the park improvement plan, which is based on the comp plan, and then all of that gets funneled into the capital improvement plan. There was a statement in the ordinance that indicated that they had some higher level of review authority over the C I P, and that has been struck out. So modifications to the B O A, A, just to confirm that it is a recommending body to the city council to act on variances and appeals. So the review process for this proposed amendment, it started with the Planning Commission. Excuse me. They reviewed it on September 1st. The Park Commission, sorry, reviewed it last Wednesday, and they both recommended approval, and now it is on tonight's agenda for a public hearing, and staff recommends approval of the proposed amendments. And I can take any questions.
Any questions for Brandy?
Okay.
If not, we'll open the public hearing at 6:41. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address for the public hearing? If not, we'll close the public hearing. And then do we, do we make a motion now, or is it? Okay. So the motion is to approve the resolution number 076, amending the comprehensive plan to create a density bonus for certain land. No, that's not it.
No, no, the ordinance, 808.
Is there a page? Motion is for an ordinance amending Chapter 32 boards and commissions, there we go, of the city of North St. Paul, city code of ordinances.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Brandy. Appreciate it. Turn it back over to City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up is the city business action items and recommendations. We're going to have Brandy on point all night here.
Welcome, Brandy.
Okay, the next presentation is related to the Lilly redevelopment building, Lilly Building Redevelopment project. So this item on your agenda is actually three items in one, so I'll go through the presentation addressing all three of them. So it's a planned unit development, a zoning text amendment, and a comprehensive plan amendment for the Lilly Building project. Jim Lovell of T J L Development is the developer for the project. He submitted application for those three requests for the site that's located at the northeast corner of 7th Avenue East and Helen Street. The proposal is to build a new mixed-use building with 75 market-rate apartments, seven market-rate live-work units, and about 1,500 square feet of new commercial space. Tenant amenities will include three outdoor patios and a community rooms. Staff reviewed the proposal against the standards and the zoning ordinance for the M U 1 zoning district and determined that flexibility is needed for the project. The flexibilities are for minimum lot area, per dwelling unit, usable open space, and building height. Each of those can be accommodated through the P U D with the exception of the building height. So the Planning Commission did a pretty thorough review of this proposal at their, I believe it was their September 1st meeting, and the review criteria are listed on the screen. There's 11 of them, and I will quickly summarize each of these in the following slides. So the first criterion is whether or not the proposal is consistent with the city planning documents. The comprehensive plan designates this property as downtown mixed-use. Within that designation, vertical and horizontal mixed-use is encouraged, and residential density is expected between 12 and 22 dwelling units per acre. The proposal is consistent with that land use designation. However, the density exceeds the intended density for that land use designation. The project adheres to the downtown design manual in terms of architectural design, such as window spacing, facade design, and a variety of high-quality building materials. The project is also consistent with the recently approved redevelopment master plan as it relates to underbuilding, parking, public art, and redevelopment. The site is outlined in black on the screen. You'll notice it's in the section that's the downtown core, and then within that area of the downtown, the redevelopment master plan recommends two-to-three-story buildings. Everywhere else on the map, it's up to five stories are allowed, actually encouraged within the downtown. And staff's, it's staff's opinion that the height is acceptable in this location because it is close enough to those five-story areas, and it's an additional jumpstart for redevelopment projects that will result in a desired building transition elsewhere in the downtown. Also of note, the redevelopment master plan includes a strategy to convert Sepulah Boulevard into a living street, and one of the goals to achieve, to achieve that, one of the recommendations to achieve that goal is to activate some of the building, and the developer has taken that into consideration and has redesigned the side facing Sepulah and Helen to have an additional doorway on that, on that building exterior. So we also looked at the housing study that was done by Maxfield Research, and that study predicts between 130 and 150 market-rate apartments will be needed to meet the housing demand in the downtown between now and 2030, and this development would fulfill about half of that predicted market demand. So as mentioned, the proposed density is 110 units per acre. Increasing the density in the downtown is a stated goal of the redevelopment master plan. The P U D ordinance allows for a density increase in cases where it is compatible with the comp plan, and as stated, the comp plan kind of limits that to 22 dwelling units per acre. So that's one of the reasons we're requesting the comp plan amendment, which I'll talk about at the end of this presentation. So the Planning Commission also looked at land uses, land use and parking, and found it to be consistent with the zoning ordinance and the plans. Parking is proposed to be underground on the first floor and on the first floor, and each will have a separate garage door on Sepulah Boulevard. A total of 93 stalls will be provided, which is one per dwelling unit, and that meets the ordinance standards for the district. And there's also going to be parking for bicycles within the building. They also submitted a landscaping plan that meets the zoning ordinance. The plan calls for genko trees, the male variety, honey locusts and ornamental trees, as well as numerous shrubs, grasses, and perennials around the base of the building. And the landscape plan also proposes screening around the transformers. Utilities within a P U D must be placed underground, and the developers and the process of working with the city on the logistics of bearing those lines as part of this project. Regarding traffic, the development team submitted a trip and parking generation analysis, and that report states that building circulation and access plans do not create congestion or safety concerns for project residents or the general public. And the report concludes that the proposed development will create about 286 new daily trips, which is not expected to overburden the transportation system. The project design gives a nod to the historic downtown and will feature historic imagery as part of panels that were initially panels, but now they're going to be integrated into the glass on that side of the building where the Sepulah-Helen redesign has occurred. And the dark metal siding of the corner of the building is specifically inspired by the manufacturing history of North St. Paul. The building height is proposed to be 58 feet, which is above the maximum of 50 feet in the M U 1 district. The additional height is intended to accommodate commercial space in the live-work units, which in combination with the underground and underbuilding, parking increases the four-story building to be on 50 feet in height. So unfortunately, flexibility in building height is not one of those flexibilities offered within the P U D ordinance, and so that is why we're looking at the zoning code amendment. So on to the next two topics, zoning amendment and the comp plan amendment. So as I just mentioned, the applicant requires flexibility to move forward with the building height. The P U D ordinance sets building height limitations so that they match the underlying zoning district. So as it's written now, that's not an area of flexibility. So the text amendment simply adds building height as part of the list of those flexibilities that would be granted, that could be granted potentially. Related to the comprehensive plan amendment, the proposed density for the project is 110 units per acre, and the comp plan, as I mentioned, allows up to 22 units, dwelling units per acre in the downtown mixed-use, which is the area in the pink on the future land use map. So the proposal is to create a density bonus for specific areas identified on the future land use map that would allow density to increase to up to 110 units per acre. And that would be specific to, as it's currently proposed, there's only one area that would be able to receive the density bonus. It's the project site, and that would occur with council approval. So if there were to be another redevelopment project that would come forward that would need to receive a density bonus, another comprehensive plan amendment would be required unless we were going to do a more regional study of the downtown area. So the Planning Commission held a public hearing on all three of these items on September 1st, and they recommended approval to city council at that meeting. So based on staff review and planning commission review, we recommend approval of the planned unit development, the zoning amendment, and the comprehensive plan amendment with the conditions listed in the draft resolution, which includes satisfaction of all of the engineering-related items and execution of a development agreement. And that is all. Any questions for me or the developer?
Any questions for Brandy or the developer?
No questions, just a comment. I'd like to thank you, Brandy, for doing a lot of this work, and then to our developers and architects for making those accommodations for the Sepulah living streets and really opening that up. So I think it looks great. Thank you.
I think a lot of discussions have been discussed about behind the building, you know, with that street, and what the future looks for that, and I think this development offers kind of that vision partially for that, for that backside. You have a comments or? Not well. Thank you, Brandy.
Thank you.
So the first one is, I think I said it before, I'm sorry, resolution approving a text and map amendment to the 24 North St. Paul comprehensive plan.
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries. And Brandy did cover the second one, so. Second one is an ordinance amending Chapter 154, Section 154008, planned unit development district of the code of ordinances.
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the last one is for the P U D, and let me get that here. It's not like you got a paper copy. You can just go to it. So I'm sorry. Resolution approving a planned unit development at 2503, 2509, 2515, and 2517, 17th Avenue East, also known as the Lilly Redevelopment Project.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Jim, we got them all. If you want to come up and, we'd love to.
Skinny pants my wife got me. That's literally the first time I put them on. It's like, sorry. Oh, brilliant.
I know how that goes. In many meetings like that.
You know, the house with those on, okay. No, really, really, really excited. Thank you, thank you for your support very much. I, Brandy, very, and her counterpart on the engineering side, very thorough and made us, you know, stay on task, so we appreciate that. The project's only gotten better, so. Architects, now we're going to start drawing so we can start doing permits, and hopefully we can get everything closed up in the first quarter of next year, start ripping stuff apart and create something cool.
Good. Well, we wish you luck, and we welcome you to our community.
No, it's been fantastic, so really excited.
Good. We look forward to it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Waldron, you got anything to say? Because you've kind of.
Thank you, honorable mayor members of the council. Really, again, like I said when this first came up, this far exceeded what I, you know, had ever thought we'd see their way back in the days when I was here. So I think it's just an excellent project, and we're continuing to come together on the financial piece, and we're making progress there, and we'll be back with that in another month or so. So things are really looking good.
Good, good. Thank you both for your hard work on that. We have Item G from the consent. That is now D, and I'll turn over to Councilmember Thorson.
Yeah, I just pulled it because I don't consent, and I don't think we should spend $15,000 to hire a consulting firm for that facility, so.
Okay. So at this time, if there's any other comments or anything, motion is to, for staff seeks approval of document B 101-2017 in agreement with the city of North St. Paul and world architects and engineers.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Turn it over to City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up are the reports from city manager and departments. Just a couple of updates for you. So next week is fire prevention week, so the fire department will be out six of the schools here locally and talk to them about the fire safety. They're excited about that. Public Works, they've been busy flushing, finding a few hydrants to replace, unfortunately, at the very increased rate. But it's coming along well, and they're getting a lot of work done with the televising, all of that. They're within probably, what, a week left or so? Which is going to be great information, what we're required to do on a three-year basis of televising all of the systems. So this will be a good step in that direction, find out a lot of areas where there needs to spend a little more time with, and some not so much, but good information. And also the, oh, you guys, we talked enough about the community center, or not the community center. But unfortunately, we had some bad news last Friday. So the P E P S is the Public Employees Insurance Program, and they have had significant rate hikes, over 50%. So we're in the process of bringing on a consultant that is going to line up some R F Ps to get some more information, and we'll be able to bring more information to you at the next council meeting of where we're at.
And we went with them because we saved a ton of money two years ago or something, and now we're back right at it.
We are. So hopefully we'll have good luck in looking around, but we'll bring that back to you because it'll be part of a budget discussion as well.
That'll affect this next year's budget.
It will.
Okay.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Reports of council, commissions, and committees. Councilmember Cole.
Park and Recreation had their last meeting on 9/28. A few of the topics, they're very excited. The new park signs have been ordered, and they're, we don't know when they're going to arrive yet, but Park and Rec plans to work with staff and Public Works to determine the location and the placement. I guess there was conversation around a couple of the signs. Where they exist now, they felt that there could be better locations for better signage and for that. They discussed some clarity around the Environmental Learning Center. If I got the park right, it's the. If I got the park right, it's the one that's located on between 11th and 13th on, on Margaret on one side, and basically dead ends to some trees on the other. The information came back that it is city property, and it wasn't necessarily designated as a city park, is the way I understand, is that? Okay. So the Park and Rec didn't feel they wanted to put an environmental learning sign up in that area at this time, but definitely has some opinions as to what, how that land should be improved going, going forward.
Do we need to take that sign down that's there right now? Because that's looking pretty bad.
That was, that was a recommendation that came out of it to, there's two, there's two signs up in that space. There's one on 11th, and there's one on, I think it's the corner of 13th, just, just down from the church. One of them still has P, PCU, I believe on one of them, the other one had it popped off, so recommendation, yes, would be to, to have them taken down at some point, so... Thank you. It is 7:01, Star Watch was to have started tonight at 7 o'clock, so hopefully those who signed up received notification that, that it's been posted, canceled at this point, but they're hoping for postponement. We don't have another date booked yet, so that wasn't a city function, but it has, it has been canceled for tonight. Fall frolic is coming up on October the 15th, Saturday, at Casey Lake from 2 to 8 o'clock. There'll be food trucks from 2 to 4, there's a scavenger hunt, local performers will be there for, for entertainment, as well as the craft wagon? I have arts and craft wagon, is it?
I have artisans and crafters.
There we go, all right. Thank you.
Yep.
As well as bingo, and then from 6 to 8 o'clock, there's a live band playing for fun and dancing. And that's all I, oh, next Park and Rec meeting is October the 26th. I have nothing to report for EDI, I'm assuming it was covered the last meeting when I wasn't here, but the next meeting is next Tuesday at, at the 11th at 3 o'clock here at City Hall.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong.
Sure, yeah, the Arts and Culture Commission had met earlier this month, and they discussed the fall frolic as well, and kind of recruiting some more crafters and performers. It looks like also Project Snowy is perhaps going to engage the North St. Paul Business Association as a, a potential option for partnership. The next meeting for the Arts and Culture Commission is tomorrow at 6:30 in Sandberg. The Planning Commission had met earlier this month, and as you all have voted on this evening, the PUDs as related to the Lilly Project and some of the text amendments. Additionally, I think the upcoming agenda includes the 2395 Margaret and the development proposal there, and then a public hearing in regards to the Eldridge Plat Lines, and that will be on Thursday. And that's all I have. Thank you.
I think they poured the footings today for Eldridge, or, I think they're, the walls are up, wow. Wow, going quick. Councilmember Peterson.
Just have one item, the Business Association luncheon is next Tuesday, October 11th, at noon at the Legion, and it will be the candidates' meet and greet, who's running for City Council, and you're encouraged to come. It's gonna be business people asking questions, so it should be a good, a good time. That's all I have, thanks.
Councilmember Thorson. General Business, Councilmember Cole.
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Wong.
Yeah, just wanted to say that it looked like the booyah was a great success.
Booyah!
Yeah, cars were just parked all along my street, so it was good to see that. Thank you.
Good. Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, I wanted to say the candidates' meet and greet last week at the Legion was very good, a lot of young people running, good to see that, good participation from the citizens, so it was informative, we don't have a newspaper, and the Pioneer Press doesn't do any good about voter guides, so it was good to have that out there for the people. And the Candlelight POW Walk was very well attended and very solemn ceremony, I always enjoy that part of it. It was a good speaker, we had a beautiful night.
First time.
Usually, it's not nice. It's cold or rainy, but it was a beautiful night, so I wanna thank the citizens for coming out for that, 'cause we're, they're very unusual, unusual that we have that parade, or not parade, that walk, a lot of the communities don't, and we've been doing it for a long time, so kudos to North St. Paul, the Legion, and the VFW.
I think we're the only one in the Twin Cities that does a POW parade.
I think so. The people come from other cities to participate.
We had a, probably a couple hundred people out there.
Oh, yeah, easily.
So it was very, very well attended.
That's all.
Councilmember Thorson.
I'm pretty sure our officially designated newspaper is a Star Tribune, just to clarify. And I don't know, I think voter guides come out in a couple weeks, but, I don't know, that's all.
I just wanna say the toy shelf ceremony today, meeting Norma and her little crew down there, she does a tremendous job down there, and I just give her a lot of credit for what she has done to that toy shelf, and also the food shelf, in conjunction with both of them, and all the hard work that went into that, and it's really turned into just a really nice, nice venue for her. You know, Norma is one of those people that puts a lot of hard work in, and she has some struggles with health, but she keeps plowing through, and love seeing her smile down there, and the way she gives away her toys is just tremendous, so thank you, Norma, and, and the food shelf for what you do down there. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Anybody else? Got anything? City Attorney, you're okay down there?
Doing great, thank you.
Okay. Not, motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilmember Cole.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries, we are adjourned. Have Morgan to come up and talk for at least five minutes, or at least one of the first, first meetings.